Oh, I got it. Was it work to the, is that the one? Sorry, man. I figured it was an email, so you would be able to.
You've already been in there. Oh, I think it was.
Yeah.
This is coming.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, four thirty?
I didn't see that one. It was here.
Yeah, I was like, oh.
That's your one.
Hmm?
I have virtually visited three countries today. My husband's in town because he says we're dying. Yeah. Home.
So, please sit up.
If we want to change this, we need to change it. But we need to have a very open and honest discussion about how we're going to change it. So, and with regards to how the meetings are conducted, that's the president. The president is in charge of making sure the meetings flow. So if we have a set time for how long people are to talk, we should keep to it. And if we want to reduce that time, so be it. But requiring a vote before we vote, a vote before we even discuss an agenda item, that's not okay. It actually inhibits our ability to represent you. Because if, there's about 3,000 residents, give or take, in the Lake Orion, in the village of Lake Orion. So if 2,993 want something on the agenda, and they talk to one of us, and we bring it to the village council meeting, but four people won't vote on it, or three other people won't vote on it to put it on the agenda, it won't get on the agenda. That's what this is saying. That's my comment.
Mr. Narge?
And a point well taken, that this is advisory and we're to look at that, but I just kind of wanted to clarify, if you would, for us, sir, that what you've recommended here, and I've read it, are these consistent with Robert's Rules of Order?
They're consistent with other parliamentary procedures adopted by other bodies, municipal bodies, boards, councils, commissions, across. This language was taking, taken from an example used by another, I don't know the exact municipality that I took that language from, or used part of it from. But yeah, it's very standard types of language, at least that part of it is.
You say standard language.
Excuse me?
No, hold on, clarification, you're not telling us what community?
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm going somewhere with my line of questioning.
Yes, sir.
And that was my next question, is are there more than one community that have these types of standards and procedures?
There may be. I didn't do that thorough of a search of all the communities in Michigan.
Okay, understood.
I found a sampling, and based on that sampling, this seemed to fit because of the issues raised. But again, it's to council's discretion what you want to do. I don't take a position on it one way or the other. It was just thought that, you know, if, if, to have a majority vote to put something on the agenda, if you didn't have a majority to vote to put it on the agenda, you probably don't have a majority vote to even pass it at a future agenda. So I think that was the logic behind that type of language.
Okay. And, but for the record, I wasn't specifically speaking of just that item. I was asking that all of the recommendations in here are to Robert's rules for standard meetings and used commonly in other communities, as a, as a majority of what you presented to us today.
I would say so. I mean, the only other distinction was that we distinguish between items of a routine nature and not routine nature. I don't know if that's extremely common among communities. But the goal and purpose was try to get it out front ahead of time, so council could have enough information to make an informed decision well in advance of any future meetings, so proper staff could do reports and provide background information for council, rather than springing it on council at the last minute and being asked to make a decision that may be you not comfortable making without enough information to support that. I wasn't trying to be obstructionist in any way, it was simply a suggestion.
Thank you.
Ms. Rutt?
Yeah, a couple clarifying things. So, my understanding, as I read this, was that was, the vote of four members is the addition of items to the prepared agenda, not in advance, because on packet page 47, under item D, regular meetings, it says to be included on the prepared agenda, an item of business shall be submitted to the village clerk no later than noon on Tuesday preceding the regular meeting. So if a council member has an item that they would like put on the agenda, and they have all their documentation, they're supporting things, they can submit it to Susan on the Tuesday beforehand. It doesn't require a vote, as they submit it and it's there. This, with the affirmative vote of four members, is to help prevent those items being sprung on people without having time to process all the, the information, as I read it. Unless it's an item like of routine nature that it, okay, that's easy, you know, we need, sure. But if it's an item that requires a lot more information for us to, to consider, to process, it just gives a safeguard to us that it's not going to be tried, you know, to be sprung on us. And then in those meetings, as I read item number three under seven, so that's under item seven, the first paragraph, addition of items to the prepared agenda shall require the affirmative vote of at least four members of the council. That's the suggested edit. Then there's an additional item, number three, items of a routine, of a non-routine nature introduced by members of council for a future meeting. So my assumption, and maybe that just needs some clarification, is that during a meeting, if something comes up, we can simply vote to say, hey, this isn't maybe for this agenda, but let's, let's put it on the, a future one. Or it could be submitted to Susan before, by Tuesday of the meeting before. So, as I read this, it seemed to me it just was putting some parameters in place for things that are being introduced on the fly, in the moment, here and now. That would require the majority of us to agree to take up at that time. But if you have everything already put together, as long as it's into Susan, or by Tuesday the week before, it's on the agenda, it's there for us to read and then to consider. So, as I read this, clear, you know, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but that is the understanding that I took away from this, that there is a process that any of us could request, as long as it's a Tuesday before, but it needs four votes if it's getting added as a last-minute agenda item. And then, the only other comment I had on this, this is helpful to see this again, because it's not easy to find. Mr. Stevens, I agree that the website isn't always all that helpful in finding some things. But I appreciated it, because I was one of those people who, who had mentioned, you know, hey, what are the clear rules and procedure, especially when it comes to taking up items for discussion? And, because according to Robert's rules, you know, we've heard, you know, we don't have to let the public comment on things, but under our current rules of procedure, under E, item number, EC, I guess it says, you know, council will address items on the approved agenda as follows, presentation, discussion by council, then a call to public for discussion of the item. So nothing on here, there's nothing to say, hey, we don't have to let the public discuss. No, according to our rules of procedure, we have to let the public discuss. So, in meetings where it's been said, no, we don't have to, that goes actually against our published rules of procedure. And so that was my big frustration point, and why I wanted, why I said I want to make sure we're clear on rules of procedure, because I don't want public discussion to be cut off. So, and then after that deliberation and action by council, and that period is uninterrupted by the public. So, when we get to that point, then yes. But before that deliberation, before that final deliberation and action happens, the public have to be allowed to comment on agenda items as they come up. So, those are my comments.
Ms. Ryan?
So, I agree completely with councilperson Rutt, and I completely agree with this council person here, too.
Luxinger.
Luxinger, that's your name, with the baby, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, so my comments are, I do not believe the document the council presented does exactly what you would like it to do. I agree with what you said, I do not believe this document is 100% what that says. The portion where someone appropriately submits an item for the agenda in advance, according to our published rules, is good. At that point, I might suggest that a person that has an agenda item that they want to submit far in advance of the meeting, they have submitted and have a second from another member of the council. So there are two people submitting, that at least two people are going for something, and then we bring it forth to the meeting, and the council can then act on it. You can have the up or down. That prevents like one rogue person, you know, putting all kinds of crazy things in front of the council every week. Additionally, I agree that the last-minute item agendas for drama and stuff may not be useful, and it would be appropriate to have, you know, concurrence of the council to approve any last-minute additions, either from the audience or from the board. That would, I agree. Four people vote, it's on or it's off. But the, having four people agree to put it on the agenda is prejudging and preconsidering a motion, I mean, not a motion, an item. What's the point of consideration if the council has already decided on an answer? So that's the point of having an agenda and having items for consideration. So the only way I digress with you are, is and I think that perhaps we should just have a, two council people need to present an agenda item in advance, so appropriate time, and then at the council meeting, they can, you know, decide, table it, ask for more information, and move it to another meeting. I think that's a nice comment. The second one is public comment. This is where I agree with councilperson Luxinger. Public comment, I believe I was wrong in the previous meeting, when I said I wouldn't let Mr. Barnett speak. Okay? And I think that public comment is important, but I, I think it's important, we're very clear in our rules of the procedure for the president, who's ever, or the president pro tempore, whoever is chairing the meeting, that we go through proper procedure for motion, support, and discussion, and that the council, there's 100 people to talk about the same thing over and over again, that this be controlled and limited, so that we have a pleasant and controlled discourse. And then lastly, council said he didn't put this up tonight for decision, he said they just put it up here for, so when Joe, whoever put it on the agenda, put a recommended motion, he said he put it up tonight for us to study. Those are my comments.
Council?
Thank you, yeah, that was my intent, Ms. Rutt, I think you read. Maybe it wasn't written as cleanly as you said it. And again, that was the intent, to have it on the regular agenda for present, for exactly what was discussed, to give us some guidance as to what you think you want to see with regard to how this policy should take shape, or nothing. So I appreciate everybody's comments, and I'll go back to the drawing board and, and look at that from a, from that perspective.
I would request a list of communities that use this language, and where you got it from.
Sure.
So I'll make a motion to receive and file with the understanding that the attorney's office will comply with questions asked and receive council input.
Further discussion?
From the, from us or from the public?
From us. Any comments from public?
Hi, Cat Sudlack, 596 Central. You'll have to forgive me, I'm listening and learning as I go, so I try to make notes instead of just coming with preconceived notions. So, can I just clarify what Teresa said? Six days' notice, and if it's after that, four council members have to approve, but before that, it's just, you can just add it?
Yeah, you could, you'd submit, there's an agenda request form, agenda and a request form, that then is submitted to the village administration, to the clerk as she prepares the, the council packet. But if it's after that six days, then it would have to be, if we adopted these rules, a special vote to take it up that meeting, otherwise, if it's not that six days and it wanted to be added to an agenda, it would be the following agenda.
Okay, so if I come to you with a concern, and it's prior to the six days, you can submit that, and we can add it as an agenda item without the four people?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And keep in mind that, right now, the way it reads is that four people would have to approve it in, within that six days.
No.
For last-minute items, less than six days, right?
That's what I meant.
Yeah, if it was the day of, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so if it were seven days in advance, or however much in advance, I could come to one of you, talk about it, and you could say, yeah, we'll put it on the agenda, and it wouldn't need four of you.
And what the proposed is saying, if you have something that you want to put on the agenda, we would vote on it first, before putting it on a future agenda?
If it was during the meeting.
Yes.
That, that third point is a little nebulous, I think, the way it reads for the future agenda item, if we could just wait and put it on the agenda via the standard procedure anyway. So that's the one for me that needs cleared up. If we're in the middle of a meeting, yeah, we could just, that to me is just like a motion to table it, to something, you know?
Can I, can I clarify real quickly? I, I'm not sure about your question, but you are always welcome to go to the village manager's office and make the request to him. The village manager controls the agenda for the village of Lake Orion. If he chooses to put some request of your part on the agenda, he may do so without council's permission. He is the, he runs the village, so if you want something, like you have a problem, something with your street, or you want to do something, you can go directly to the village manager, and he can put it right on the agenda if he so chooses. We can take it off if we so choose, but rarely do we.
Okay, so, help me under, that's what I'm looking for, is clarification.
What we're talking about mostly is the village council people's initiatives to put items on the agenda. These usually a little bit more involved, or more controversial, so like routine citizen matters and, and things around the neighborhood, the village, the village manager's there for you. And he, he puts many of these little consent item agendas to have a, something repaired, or a street corrected, or something investigated, so that's an option available to you.
Okay, so what if I, what if I came to Joe, the manager, or any of you individually, as somebody to come talk to you about how things are run? For example, we, we don't follow Robert's rules, we don't, we don't follow procedural anything, which I think you, Teresa, brought up a couple of times ago. If I came to talk to somebody about that, just, just talking about this, this part that's on the agenda right now, more than six days in advance, would it need four of you to vote and say, we can put it on the agenda? Or would me, as a taxpaying citizen, coming to you with a concern, or come to Joe with a concern, would it then get on the agenda?
Well, the, the village manager actually has the option to deny any agenda item request right now by any council person. Okay? That's why these rules are fairly primitive and lacking.
Susan, do you have anything to say?
Council? Did you have anything you wanted to add, sir?
I think the question was posed to the clerk, maybe? Although I can speak to one thing, I know for members of the public, there is a form that the public can get, download, or get it from City Hall, and fill it out, and that's an official request to have the village manager consider putting it on a future agenda, as long as it complies with the timeframe. So there's actually a village form for that purpose, for, for members of the public to fill out.
But Joe can still deny it?
There's got to be, I guess, some sort of gatekeeping function when, when there's stuff that would be dilatory, or, or not really business, that would be before the village council, so there, there does have to be some gatekeeping function.
Sure, if I'm talking about passing out marshmallows on the street, I'm sure he can say, we're not going to put that on the agenda. But, so, okay, so back to the, the issue at hand, I think, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, I just don't feel like I have an answer, so just help me out here if I missed it. If I, if I come here with a reasonable, and I realize that's a very subjective term, if I come here with a reasonable request to Joe, or to one of you, because I feel like I can talk to one of you, and you can put it on the agenda, and we can address it, as long as I talk to you about it, and it's something that we should all be talking about, again, I know that's subjective, prior to six days, four of you don't have to vote on it for it to be put on the agenda? Correct. Okay, then I won't, I won't beat this horse anymore. So, again, my notes are from everything that I've learned. We don't have an established rules of order here at all?
No, we, we do.
Okay.
This is a proposed change to that.
To that, okay. Okay.
And Mr. Narge, would you like to add something?
I would.
Please, I've got tons of questions, and I'm trying to organize them, so you might have answered all of them in this dialogue, I just...
I, I've just, I've been involved in small government for 40 years, and I hear your frustrations, and also your questions. And I would encourage the public all the time, and this, this happens all the time, and I've experienced it. So someone comes in, and they'll go to the village manager, excuse me, and they'll say, I have a question about DPW procedure, or police procedure, or they'll bring it up at a meeting. All those doors are always open, and a lot of times, the information that you're seeking, and this goes to everybody in the public, come see us, give us a call, call the manager, they're the, the gatekeeper for the whole village, and then you start posing your question, he or she is going to come back with, you know what, that's a great question for the police chief. And this comes up in council meetings all the time, and then they're deferred back to, you know, give it to the police chief, give it to the DPW director. And then, I would say, in my career, 99, 98% of everything that was a concern is resolved by those department heads who are running those departments, to the satisfaction of the person asking the question. If it's an issue that they can't resolve, or there's a request to change a procedure or a policy, then that's something that would go back to the manager for a possible discussion by this group. But I, I, I've always said, please, you know, call the chief, call the DDA director, call the, the manager, if that's in their bailiwick. And you'd be surprised what information you can get, and that they will gladly come out and help you in those areas. And if it's something, obviously, different policy procedure, definitely come see the manager.
Yeah, I, I certainly respect that answer, and I think that would, that's a great answer. I just, I guess, what is the purpose in response to that? What is, what is the purpose of this proposal, then? Like, where, where did this arise from?
My opinion is that you, if you've been to some council meetings, we've drifted back and forth, and whether we have maintained our parliamentary position is always in discussion. But I think sometimes, at least for me, I, I don't mind having that discourse back and forth. I mean, I always had an open door, and, trust me, half the people you arrested in domestic violence in my career loved you, and the other half hated you. It just depends whether it was mom or dad going to jail. But give us a call, let's have that conversation. And I think sometimes when it happens up here, it can get a little volatile, and what we're trying to do is get back to a little more decorum on the rules of debate, including, and I raised this question the other day, I was thinking about it, council comments. I mean, can I sit up here and give you a four and a half hour council comment? I don't think it's fair to everybody, but I think that council comments are like a five-minute thing, just like public comment. And I think that's fair to everybody in the room. So those kind of things, if we don't make that a kind of Robert's rules. And, and keep in mind, I, I've worked on other communities as well, and their councils follow those same kind of rules. They can be a little bit different, but they all kind of follow timeframes, or we'd be here till four in the morning.
I, I think my concern is alleviated by hearing, and I'll have to read this to independently verify it, which I've done none of prior to this, but I, my concerns are alleviated by hearing that, as long as my comments, or whatever, is addressed prior to that six days, it doesn't need a council vote to suddenly be added. I think that was my biggest concern. If it's within that five days, or six days, or whatever, I don't think it's, it's much of a concern, because before that, I was concerned about why we wouldn't just have the dialogue and put it up for discussion. So, but it, it sounds like maybe that's not an issue?
Well, I, I think, I think council, the term you used earlier is not meant to be punitive. I thought that, that, I'm sorry?
No, it's not.
Right. And so, really what we're looking to do with this is to get additional and correct information, so that we can have the proper debate.
Okay.
And so, when it comes to us, two days prior, or one day, prior to the actual meeting, and, and we've even had it where it's on our table right here, we haven't had time to study. And that's where we'd like to be able to say, we'd like to move this to the next meeting.
Okay, so it's strictly within that, I'm sorry, strictly within that six-day timeframe that we're, okay.
May I make a comment?
Yes, Ms. Soss.
You bring up a very good point, that, you know, you're here, and you're just asking questions because you don't know. A lot of people come to village council meetings with something they have to say, that they need to discuss with the village council, and they don't know the rules pri, you know, all of these Robert's rules. So, this chain, this proposed change, that those non-routine introduced by members of council for further, for future meetings, you know, if you said something, and I made a motion, you know what, I would like to be able to hand out marshmallows down the road. In order for it to even be put on a future meeting tip for discussion, we would need four, four votes. That's what this proposed is.
Even though it's more than six days?
No, no, if you came to the meeting, like if you just said right now that you wanted to hand out marshmallows.
Okay.
We would have to, that's just, it's like widgets, you know, let's say it was something important, maybe marshmallows were really important to this community. We would have, we would need a majority vote to even, to discuss it further. And what the, what the problem is with what, the president said, what you said, is that it's to make sure that we have all the information?
That's one of them.
Right.
Go ahead.
But, but we're voting on whether or not we're going to, the proposed rule would be that we're voting before we have that information, as to whether or not we're going to discuss it at a future meeting. So we don't have any of the information that you're requesting to discuss in the future.
Right. Go ahead, Ms. Rutt.
Yeah, to, to clarify that, it's just, hey, I want to put marshmallows on this meeting today.
Right.
And I would say, no, I don't have the information, four of, you know, you don't have, it's not that we're saying, no, this isn't important to discuss, it's, it's important enough to discuss that I can't discuss it right now. It doesn't preclude you from then, tomorrow, submitting the agenda request form for the next meeting. So it's not preventing that, it's just saying, I don't have it right now, it's important enough that I need to have the information right now, so no, I'm not going to take it up at this agenda, on this meeting.
Right, but even for the future, to put a non-routine item on a future?
That's what I said was a little bit nebulous for me, the procedure for that, like why that, that piece is there? Because we have the provision that, as long as it's six days before, you know, the Tuesday before. So, I'm, I'm a little unsure of what this exactly is supposed to be, because it just seems like a simple, like, let's table that to the next meeting type of thing.
Your point to that, great.
Yeah, item three.
May I ask, and I, I wrote this down a couple of times, what is routine? I keep hearing routine and non-routine, and maybe I'm super ignorant here, but I feel like that's, again, really, what is routine and non-routine?
I feel like routine could be something like, oh, we forgot to put the electrical bill for one of our parks on the, you know, in there. Yep, that's a routine thing, we're going to pay that bill. So I feel it's something like that, versus, hey, we want to throw a mad marshmallow party here in Village Hall in two weeks.
So it's incredibly subjective. Is there any, is there anything, anything that can help me with this routine things? I, I wrote this down, and you mentioned it a lot, and I am interested in looking that up.
Mr. Chair, or Mr. President?
Yes.
I don't know if I mentioned routine that much, I, it's mentioned two or three times in there.
Oh, I wasn't trying to attack you, I just, it was something that I honed in on, and...
Would, would council be inclined to consider maybe taking a look at a draft model to, and I didn't want to complicate things, I certainly, that was not the intent.
Understand.
The intent was to try to simplify things, and it seems, based on discussion, maybe it's gone the other way. Would you rather consider maybe a draft of a, from a, a reliable parliamentary Robert's rules draft? There's model rules and procedures out there for councils across the country. If that's something, council, and maybe there's something out there, there's a better, a better mechanism to do business, and if, and simpler than maybe what we're discussing this evening, I'd be happy to come back to council with that, too.
Well, and I, I'm just going to jump in and say, in my motion, that's what I recommend, is that, we toss that back to you, we haven't got to the vote on that, but my motion was to defer back to council, and have you bring us additional information from other communities, perhaps identify those communities, how many, that type of thing. So, really what you're saying is exactly what I think the motion is asking. And I was going to follow up with one other thing, and again, this goes back to the public. This is why I say, talking to the manager or department head can really help. And I'm going to go down the government road, and I hate saying that, because I'm like Jerry, I'm not government, but for four years, I guess I've been government. But here's what happens, you come in and you say, I want to throw a marshmallow party tomorrow. It all sounds good, but at the minute a government body approves that, then we got to make sure that you have a permit from the Health Department, that the marshmallows, if they're individually wrapped, they have to be certified, if they're not individually wrapped, then it's an item the Health Department would have. So there's so many regulations that we have to make sure that the public's health and safety is taken care of, that when it's thrown quickly on an agenda, it doesn't give us time to do the due time to do the due diligence that by law we have to do.
So let me ask, and I did want to ask this, and I still want to respond to, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, councilman. That's the village attorney.
Village attorney.
The village attorney, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Nick.
Oh, sorry, Nick. I do want to ask you another question, but I, so if I, if something is on the agenda, something is being voted on, it's not just being discussed? It's one hundred, if I were, again, this terrible example, marshmallows, if I come to you and want to talk about it, it's, it's going to be voted on and not just discussed? If I want to put it on the agenda?
If it's on an agenda, then it's going to be voted on or discussed, it could be tabled, it could be moved based on new information. But what it gives staff the ability to do is, does this require a legal review? Is it a change in something that we need legal review? Okay, we're going to have to have the attorney look at. Is this something that's going to take additional police staffing? Okay, it's got to go to the Police Department to recommend it for staffing, because is that budget? Do we have to do a budget amendment to provide additional staffing? Is additional garbage receptables or street signs going to be needed to close down a street? Then it's got to go to the DPW for their review. All of that comes back, legal opinion, department head reviews, the manager gets that back, puts it on the agenda. That's why we say we need that time, because every time a council agenda comes on, almost every single time, one of those departments are going to be involved, so it has to go to that department head, can you do this? The village manager cannot speak for the Police Department, nor can the Police Chief speak for the DPW.
So if I want to, just, your example made me think of an actual legitimate example instead of marshmallows. If I, if I wanted to come to you and say, hey, a lot of us live on the lake, I think we have a huge trash issue, there's, I'm picking up recycling and trash out of my yard, not of people's yards in the lake, because we have open recycling bins. And if I want to say, hey, I'd like to get a closed recycling bin, obviously, I could go do that myself. But if I just brought that, and I said, hey, I think that we should provide these to everybody so that way we don't have as much trash in the lake. What you're telling me is, what I should do is, instead of bringing it up here, I should go to-
The village manager.
The village manager, talk to him, and ask him to put it on the agenda.
Because it's a great idea, and what he would do is contact our waste provider and say, hey, do you guys have the flip-type top closer? I got to believe in windy communities, call Chicaco.
Okay.
What do they do? Right? But that's what he would do, he'd contact our waste provider, he would look into it, or she, and they would contact other providers, see if it's an option, then they would give back to you. If there's going to be an increased cost, that cost is going to be passed on to every member of the village. So if the waste provider's going to say, yeah, we can do that for you, but it's $4 extra a bin, okay, so the village has got to pay that, so that, that cost is going to go on, that's going to raise everybody's. So then, is there a dollar value to this? And does that impact-
So at that rate, it would be brought to you and-
That would be brought to us, so then we can look at it, hear from you, look at the impact from the department heads, what the manager's review was, and then know how to accurately respond. And keep in mind, the manager would call you back and let you know that, and you might go, oh, forget that, it's a $75 bin.
Sure, we're discussing it, yeah.
Let's come up with a new idea.
So that's the better route than coming here. But the whole, back to the whole, this issue at hand, the six days is not, as long as you address it before six days, it can be addressed. It doesn't have to take four of you.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then, just back to discussing with Nick, I still, I didn't mean to be super confrontational, I just, I still feel like I don't have an answer for the word routine, and I just don't, is there a place, and you can direct me and say, go look it up, here's where you look it up. I just am very confused, and I feel like it's being thrown around like it's a definitive, objective thing.
If I may, I think that's what the council and the Attorney's Office is going to come up with.
That's what you're saying, they need to look up.
That's what we're going to do.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Roth.
I have a very brief final comment. Just as a thing, yes, every item has some type of action taken, it may be as simple as receiving file information, but there has to be some action on an item that does come onto the agenda. But then, in regards to, you asked, like, you know, different formats, I'm in general, just me personally, comfortable with this, not item number three, that new red-lined item, because that's confusing to me. I'm comfortable with some of the other changes, and just as a point of clarification, just so everybody knows, too, so these are rules of procedure, how we have agreed with proposed amendments to conduct our meetings, and then in absence of that, Robert's Rules does take over parliamentary procedure, so order of motions and things like that, that prevails. And if there's no other, if there's not something that's clear in here, the Robert's Rules does prevail, just as a point of clarification for the public, so.
Well, and, and our procedures have to comply with state law. Correct.
Anybody else? One moment, please, we'll listen to this gentleman here.
Don Conrims, 745 Central Drive. Just so I got this clear, none of you asked the village lawyer to draft this information. Is that correct?
Counsel?
I did not.
Were you, did you receive a request by anybody?
Any council members?
We received some suggestions from council members, and when posed to the village manager, he thought it was a good idea.
So it did come from somebody on the council?
I wouldn't say.
Because I just find it interesting, if Joe does it, and we've got to go to Joe to get something put on the agenda, and he says no, and we come to the council, and all of a sudden, we have to have four people, eh, it kind of looks like maybe he's got a way of stifling the public's will.
And to answer the question for council, Mr. President, if I may, the language was purely our creation, it didn't come from a council member. He simply said, it might be a good opportunity to look at the procedures and policies, to consider doing something that might direct council with adding items to the agenda at a future meeting. And the language was from our office, it wasn't from any council member.
And again, the, the public is not prohibited, sir, from asking for an agenda item, it's just that it's looking to be prepared properly, so if it's submitted six days in advance, it can become an agenda item.
No, I understand that part.
Prepared properly. Ms. Nurse?
Yeah, I was just going to comment, I think our information is public, it's out there. And again, I, I'm not speaking for all the council members, I'm just saying myself, but I think they would agree with his comment. If you email us, call us, stop and say hello, and you got a concern or a question, we're going to filter that through what we kind of know about how to best help you. And if that's, you know what, that is a concern. Or you know what, from history, I can tell you this, not that that will satisfy you, but we may end up saying, you know what, that's something I think you need to take to the manager, and let's pursue this. I don't have to call four council members, call a special meeting, and vote just to guide you to get help, right? That's never going to happen. So, you know, I want to hear from people, I want to hear, you know, that's my job. And, you know, and I think at the end of the day, everybody here, every department head wants to help everybody in the village to the best of their ability, but remember that government affects everybody we serve. So at no time can we say, okay, we're going to do this just for you. So it has to be, you know, which makes it hard sometimes, it's like, well, I just, I want those two police officers in front of my business making sure nothing happens to it. Well, we've got to do that for every business.
Sure.
So, so there's those kind of things, but we'll always get your concern addressed either by the manager, the department heads, or this body.
Well, I understand that, but sometimes you make decisions, and you put hard numbers on there, and you don't think of the consequences that come after that. As for example, in the draft that you proposed there, the statement was, for the public, if they want to get something put on the agenda, they need four council members. It also says if you have a quorum, so if you've got a quorum, and you don't have all seven members, and maybe there was five, and enough for a meeting, now I've got to get four out of five. Whereas, when you turn around and talk about council members, and they need to put something on the agenda, you said the majority. So one, you're putting a finite number on, and the other one, you're saying the majority, and the two of them should match. They shouldn't be different.
And my motion, sir, is tonight that we're about to vote on, is to bounce that back to him.
Sure.
We've heard from the public, we've heard from council, and I think there's going to be a different boiled product coming out of this. This is the first we saw in advance, when we got our packets, this was language and information from our attorneys that were suggestions and guidelines from other communities.
Well, that should concern you, too, right? If we've got to give six days' notice for you to see it, and he can provide something to you the day before, and now you're here, getting ready to vote?
No, this was received six days previous. We got this.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying, is that was prepared in advance. So all that information is, so we don't get it the day of the meeting. But we want to make sure that everybody has that, that's this discussion here tonight, and that's what he's listening, what we're listening.
And I think the other difference to the-
On Friday, but it may be- Yeah, it's usually Thursday or Friday we get our packets.
We get it Friday this time. And the other difference in the way it was written was that if council is going to add something to the agenda, they need to provide the information and the cost and the business model and what it went. It doesn't say that for the public. So, I just want you to know, the way it's written isn't clear, I know that you asked for clarification. There's the majority, there's the finite numbers, there's what council's got to do versus what the public's got to do. It needs to be reworked.
And just so you know, sir, not to interrupt, but just so you know, if you suggest something to the manager, the manager's job before he brings it to us is then apply the cost factor, that's what he's going, he or she is going to do. They're going to look at this and say, I remember a motion came to this body several years ago to dome the village.
Yeah. I'm not concerned about any specific topic, just about how it comes on to the-
Yeah, the manager then will assess what, what the anticipated cost is, so we have that information, so that's their job. Even though the public might bring in, it's a great idea, but what is the cost of the covered? Even though the public might bring in, it's a great idea, but what does it cost to recover?